One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is the public forum, and I believe there's one individual here to speak. As I call your name, first, the board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak regarding the items on the posted agenda. In accordance with board policy, each person may speak for no more than three minutes. During this part of the meeting, the board will listen, will not engage in dialogue or debate with the speakers. As Mr. Abraham Mahia, speaking on the Temple Learning Center, could you please come forward now?
Good evening, all.
I can take this for you.
Yeah.
Earlier, when I came to sign up for speaking up here, my ideas were not set. What I actually wanted to speak about was how to retain teachers, being that I've been a seventh grade math teacher at Travis Science Academy.
Mr. Mahia, I'm sorry, you're signed up to speak at the Temple Learning Center. That's your topic that you signed up for tonight.
Okay.
It's here on the forum. So you have three. Christine, how much time?
Two thirty-eight.
Okay.
Okay.
You can continue.
We want, I want to show appreciation to Dr. Ott for extending the life of the Temple Learning Center. My wife was here a couple of weeks ago, and she was requesting that, how useful it is for our two-year-old to be there while I was at work, taking care of our students. I am here also to talk to you about tangible ideas and solutions to improve teacher retention within the district.
That's, that's actually, you're talking about the Temple Learning Center? That's, that's?
No.
You're talking against the Temple Learning Center?
Okay, then we will have to reschedule so that I can address these concerns.
Okay. All right. Item four is superintendent's recognition. Friends of Temple ISD Ward, Reverend UC Barnes Senior and Mrs. Parks. And would the board please come out front?
The Friend of Temple ISD Wildcat Award allows the district to formally recognize high-level partners for their contributions. And tonight, I am truly honored to be able to speak on behalf of Pastor UC Barnes. Pastor Barnes has pastored Corinth Baptist Church for thirty years, along with his precious wife, Gladys, who has served along with him and who has also served the district in many capacities, but most recently through her support and dedication at Wheatley. Pastor Barnes is also very involved in our local community, and he serves as the president, and he was the founder, of the Temple Area Coed Ministers Association, established in nineteen ninety-five. And that organization encompasses seven churches and extends all the way to the Cameron area. Dr. Barnes, we had this conversation. I'm not sure if I should say Dr. Pastor Barnes, or Mr. Dr. Pastor Barnes, so I'll probably go back and forth, but all titles are definitely earned. So Dr. Barnes is an absolute supporter of Temple ISD and our community. You have been instrumental in providing opportunities for residents of the East Side to engage and build relationships with the school district. You are not only an organizer, but you are a very forward thinker, and you're a motivator, as evidenced by your large following tonight. You befriended Dr. Ott and the school district, and you have been committed in sustaining that positive relationship between the community and Temple ISD. And Pastor Barnes, for these reasons and so very many more, we are so very proud to present you tonight as a Friend of Temple Wildcats.
I'll just make a few comments, and then, I don't know if Linnell, or Dan, or anybody else would like to, but first of all, I want to thank you, Pastor Barnes, for your support of our youth.
All across the community, you're a big supporter of our children. Our school district, you're an advocate for education, and you have helped so many people connect their voice to Temple ISD, and I think that is just huge. And we are great, very grateful for you, very grateful, and this is so well-deserved, so well-deserved.
Just briefly want to say, it is so, you're so deserving of this award. You've done so much for our kids and for our community. And again, thank you for accepting this award. You mean a lot to us. Would you like?
Oh, he wants the microphone.
Yes.
To the board, to the trustee board, to the Temple Independent School District, I'd just like to say that we're, I'm very humble, and I'm thankful, I don't know if I really deserve, but I am grateful that you thought enough to share this with me. We are here to support one hundred and ten percent, whatever your endeavors may be, and especially the children. So my prayers to this board is to keep marching forward, keep...
Holding on, keep trusting in the Almighty.
Oh, yes. Yes.
I think he wants to recognize you.
At least, my wife, Gladys. Excuse me.
Yes, come on up.
And then, I would just like to thank all of the Corinth and the Temple Area Coed Ministers Association, and friends, and family, for being here tonight. And would you all just stand and give yourselves a hand? God bless you all.
Now, yes, and I told the audience that they can take as many as they want, so y'all just stand there and smile, and we'll let you know when we're done.
If anybody in the audience wants to come up here and take pictures?
You're welcome to.
More than welcome.
Mm-hmm. Look at the back of your head.
If you haven't had a chance, when you walk downstairs, on the wall facing this way over first floor, you'll see a Friends of Temple ISD, big wooden perpetual plaque, and we already have his name up there. It's the last one.
All right, we're good now.
Good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And yes, thank you all for attending, and you are welcome to stay for the meeting, but you are also welcome to make your exit as well at this time, so stay on.
You guys can go celebrate.
Congratulations.
I think he was a starting quarterback in the NFL.
Yes.
Keep going, that sounds good.
Item four is executive hires. A, consideration for approval of Deputy Superintendent of Academics and School Leadership, Dr. Lisa Adams and Dr. Ward.
Okay, Mr. Posey, Board of Trustees, Dr. Ott. The senior leadership team interviewed for the position of Deputy Superintendent of Academics and School Leadership on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and is recommending Dr. Lisa Adams as the finalist for the position. Dr. Adams received a bachelor's in nineteen ninety-seven from Texas A&amp;M University, a master's in educational leadership in two thousand and seven from Tarleton State University, and a doctorate in educational leadership from Texas A&amp;M University in two thousand and nineteen. Dr. Adams has faithfully served the district for twenty-four years. She has served as a classroom teacher, campus instructional specialist, instructional coach, assistant principal, director of math and science, executive director of secondary education, and most recently, the assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. She's been kind of busy. Dr. Adams has been married to her husband Josh for eighteen years, who is a nineteen ninety-six Temple graduate. Good job.
It's not American.
Together, they have two very talented young men. Clayton is fifteen, and Luke is thirteen, and I almost feel like I need to ask y'all to come up and sing a song or something, because I've seen lots of them on video. So, Dr. Adams is committed to Temple ISD and to growing teachers and administrator in the district, and she's excited about the opportunities that this new position provides her in the community. So it is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Adams for the Deputy Superintendent of Academics and School Leadership.
Dr. Ott, I know you have a few words to say first.
Just have a few comments to add on to what Donna was saying. First, I just wanted to be clear that this is not an added position to the school district. It is a reclassification of an existing position. And really, this gets our organizational chart in line with our peers of comparable districts. And then the last thing is to just describe the difference between an assistant superintendent and deputy superintendent. Assistant superintendent, traditionally in school districts, is a position that is responsible for a department. Deputy superintendent, traditionally, is someone who's not only responsible for a department, so in this case with Lisa, curriculum instruction, but also principals, which is a whole other added responsibility. So I just wanted to be really clear with the board on the distinction and the difference between the two. Thank you.
All right, members, are there any questions or anything? It does need a motion to pass?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Santi. All in favor signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it passes. Congratulations, Dr. Adams.
Silver. Hoping I kept my job. No. I'm very, I was thinking about like this moment, and what would be the words that would describe it? I think two words. The first one is grateful. I'm so very grateful to the board for this opportunity. You've just invested in me in so many ways, and so I'm so grateful to you. I'm grateful to Dr. Ott for his mentorship in my career. I'm grateful for the leadership team that I get to work with, and the amazing departmental directors that do such a great job for our district, and our campus administrators, which we have some here. I'm grateful to my family for their support, and they always, it's hard to have a working mom, and they always have supported everything I do, and I appreciate them as well. I think that we have some of the most talented and smartest administrators. We have the most amazing students, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity to continue to work with our students and our staff and our community. I mean, how special is that, that his whole church came? That embodies what Temple is about, is that we support each other, and so I'm so grateful to continue to work with our community in that way as well. I think I'm also excited, and you know me, I'm always excited, right? And so I'm super excited about all the progress we made this year, and I'm so excited to share all that with you at our next board meeting in July. But I'm also excited that all of the things that we have to work on next year, we're going to continue to work and accelerate learning and close our gaps. Our students and teachers made such amazing strides this year. I'm excited to continue to work on the leadership development, so that we, as a leadership team, can continue to grow and develop our leaders and our teachers, just like someone did for me twenty-five years ago, when I was a student teacher here at Travis Science Academy, when it was Travis Middle School. So I'm just so grateful and excited, and so I appreciate you. Thank you so much for the opportunity. It means so much. Oh, I forgot, I got a shift.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you, thanks.
Virginia Suarez probably remembers this, but the last deputy superintendent that Temple ISD had was a person by the name of Charles Behringer, who worked for Jack Reeves in the early nineties.
Okay.
I don't know anything about Charles at all. That's who hired you? Okay, well, there you go. But I will tell you, Lisa, I can't think of a better person to bring the position back for than you, and I am absolutely proud of you.
I know we've worked closely with you, you know, in your other position, and I expect we'll work even closer now with the new position. Shannon Gowan, who couldn't be here tonight, actually wants me to say a little bit. She texted me this morning. She said, Shannon, I couldn't imagine a better fit for the deputy superintendent position than Dr. Adams. Her knowledge of education and her passion for our kids is incredible. Congratulations, Dr. Adams. And that's, I think that reflects everybody here on the board too, Dr. Adams, Lisa. Thank you. Item four is the board presence report. A, future items of discussion, anything members wish to bring up at a future board meeting? Okay. B is important dates, and Dr. Ott.
Okay, I'll draw your attention to the important dates, and quite honestly, all we really have on important dates are our next meetings. June thirteenth, our regular school board meeting. June fifteenth is a special meeting on finance. The sixteenth is our special board meeting on architect interviews. We do have an additional item here. June twenty-third is the Baylor Scott &amp; White Health Community Showcase. Christine works with the chamber closely on that. If you get a chance to go by, we're, I think we've been the only school district that has had representation the last couple of years, and it has paid dividends, and we're always grateful to work with Baylor Scott &amp; White and the chamber, and this is a great event to welcome our residents. Then we have a policy committee, June twenty-ninth. Just as a reminder, I'd really like all of you to be at that one. And then the special board meeting to adopt the budget is also that evening, so that'll be right after the policy committee. And then we have a school board facilities committee meeting, June thirtieth, and that is all I have.
So full month for the board?
It is.
Yeah. Important stuff. Item seven is consent items. We have items A through H. What is the pleasure of the board to handle these items?
I move that we accept all the items.
Okay. Motion to accept all the items A through H. Motion by Mrs. Davis, if they're second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you. Item eight, action items, human resources? No items there. All right. B is curriculum instruction, advanced academics, department update, Renata Rogers and Beth Genowitz.
Good evening, Dr. Ott, Mr. Posey, and the board. Dr. Genowitz and I are excited to speak with you all this evening about our advanced academics programming, and we're going to start out with elementary. Usually, I share a little bit about dual credit, AP, IB. We talk about how many tests were passed, how many students were enrolled, and so we thought it would be great for you all to know what's happening in advanced academics at the elementary level. And then I'm also going to share a little bit about middle school, and then we'll touch just a little bit on the high school piece.
I like these kind of board meetings. All right. So... Okay. Got it. Got it. All righty, so the mission at Temple ISD talks about how our job is to make sure that students achieve at their maximum potential. With secondary, that usually means graduation. For elementary, we're the ones who are laying the foundation by offering just rigorous content and, yes, teaching kids how to productively struggle. So, some of the things Renata talked about, that I really want to highlight, is the identification process with elementary, because that is an area of celebration. So, now is when I would normally introduce Bonnie Casmer, but she is busy taking care of grandkids, which she does so well. So she is, we are very blessed to have Bonnie as our advanced academic coordinator for elementary. She's half-time because she's retired, and, but she's full-time as far as advocating for kids, and really making sure that we are doing everything we can to serve our children here in TISD. So, this kind of highlights some success that we've had throughout the year. So the first column shows where we started the year. And so, in your board book, some of the numbers may be slightly different, because Bonnie updated it, and so on the slides, you have the most up-to-date numbers. So if you notice, we had about three percent of the elementary students were identified as gifted and talented when we started the year. Through little changes in our identification process, we are happy to say we're now eight percent of our students are identified. So, in number-wise, we did a lot of testing this year. In fact, two hundred and seventy-seven of our students were tested, and out of those two hundred and seventy-seven, two hundred and twenty-six qualified. And so, every campus in that second column, you can see that the numbers, in many instances, doubled, and in some cases, has tripled from where we started the year. Well, the main changes that we made to our identification process started with how we looked at achievement. So this was our second year to use the map test, and so that gave us a nationally-normed test, which gave us great data on reading and in math. The second adjustment that we made was we switched to a non-verbal aptitude test. And so what this did was, it kind of leveled the playing field. So whether you're an English language learner, or whether you're a student that's coming from a high-poverty situation, a non-verbal test gives you equal leverage and an equal playing field. The third adjustment that we made was to make sure that we had a committee of people that knows the child and looked at all, really a triangulation of data, achievement, aptitude, and then those skills from surveys, teacher surveys, parent surveys, and how a student did. We're not done yet, because our goal is to get to ten percent of our elementary identified. So, once they're identified, then it's our job to make sure that we're meeting their needs. And so this begins in our service model with making sure that our teachers are certified with GT, that they've gone through their thirty hours of training, making sure that we are meeting their needs. And then, training continues, just like in many professions, you have a six-hour yearly update. The second thing that we really look at, I told you that we believe in productive struggle, and we believe in high-quality curriculum for everybody, but even in that high-quality curriculum, we can differentiate and go above. So, in reading, we'll be using Amplify, and in math, we'll be using STEM Scopes, a curriculum. But even within those curriculums, there's opportunities to expand and to differentiate. The third way that we serve our identified students is through a pull-out program, and that's during our DI and our RTI time. So three times a week, students come out for services, and many times, they're with the other GT-identified students, no matter who their homeroom teacher is, and then some of our highest-achieving students. And so, next year, a hundred percent of our elementary schools are going to be using their librarians as part of that delivery model, and the curriculum we're using is engineering is elementary, and then they'll also, you know, be able to use other staff as well. We will incorporate research, passion projects, and literature, of course. All righty. So I want you to meet this precious little fourth grader. Good afternoon, how are you? Tell me your name and what grade you're in.
My name is Kimberly, and I'm in fourth grade.
Great, and you were identified as GT this year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us just a little bit about that. What was the test like? Was it hard?
Kind of, because we had to find the right parts to put together.
Correct. I remember that. I remember seeing parts of that. So talk to me about going to GT now. What does it feel like?
It feels nice, because everyone kind of understands me.
Did you not have that before?
Well, no, because everyone was kind of crazy, and they didn't really understand me that much, that good.
That is great. So I heard that you said something like you finally found your place, or what did you actually say?
That I found my people.
Did you find your people?
Yes.
So when you go each time, do you feel like you're with your people?
Yes.
Well, I am so happy that you are in GT, and GT kids just think differently, and that's great, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to let you go to lunch now. Have a great day, and thank you for talking with me. So those three hours a week really give students that opportunity to be with their people. So, each year, it isn't just serving our students, but it's also involving our parents. And so, at the beginning of the year, Mrs. Casmer held her first meeting at Thornton Elementary, and it was in collaboration with the bilingual department. So if you notice, those Thornton numbers went, you know, sky-high. And at that meeting, not only did they have an interpreter to explain the identification process, but they also helped parents fill out that permission form and those applications, and to get those parent inputs. And so, we had over fifty people at that meeting. In April, we had a large gathering here in this building, and in fact, we had to have an overflow room and even repeat it. But it gave parents an opportunity to do some STEM activities with their child, they left with some free books and information on Camp Invention, which is going to happen next week. This is our third year to host Camp Invention. The first year, we started with about twenty-eight people, and that was online. And then we moved to, last year was in-person, and we had fifty people, and now, next week, we're going to welcome seventy campers. we're going to welcome 70 campers. And so, as part of that camp, the first year, we had HEB provided a $10,000 donation, and we felt it was really important that we kind of split the responsibility with parents. And so, the school district does help with part of those registration fees, so that all of our kids that want to participate can participate. So, what's next? Well, we have partnered with Region 12, and we're going to do a needs assessment, because we're never satisfied with where we are, we always want to continue to grow. And so, with that, we're going to look at a GT redesign and really getting, making sure that we look at the three pillars for designing for depth, passion-based learning, and having an enrichment hub, because many of our kids finish early in class, and they're like, now, what do, what do I do, what do I do? And by having that hub, they would have a wealth of activities that they could do. In the spring, we're going to bring back, and this really came as a result of seeking parent input with our, as part of our long-range plan, parents talked about how, on some of the campuses, there, there might only be one child in a grade level, or three children identified. And so, they were really seeking the, and desiring an opportunity to bring all of the kids across the district together. And so, in the spring, we'll be hosting a Collaboration Day, to where all students across the district will come together.
Okay, and so, Dr. Genowitz shared with you all the growth that's happening at the elementary level, and so, surely, as students matriculate and make their way to middle school and high school, we'll see this number increase. This is the number of students currently in grade six through 12, who are enrolled in at least one advanced course. That's 1,270 out of our middle schools and our high school. And again, I think that with the identification process changing for elementary, as well as some more numbers that I'm going to show you in just a minute, we'll be able to identify more students who are able to participate in our advanced academics courses. Just a quick reminder that our advanced academics courses include advanced core classes in the middle school, and then our middle-years program at Travis Science Academy, and then we also have those advanced courses in ninth and 10th grade that help to prepare students for the AP, IB, and dual-credit and bioscience programs in the 11th and 12th grade years. And so, the color is a little bit off on these greens, but that's okay, because you guys are looking over here. And so, what you'll see, Dr. Adams mentioned, Dr. Adams mentioned that she's going to share with you the growth that we saw in our student performance, and so, I'd like to give you a little bit of a peek like that, of that, with her permission. We talk often about, I asked for the permission before now. We talk often about how well our AP students are doing, and how many students pass the AP test, and how many students earned IB diplomas, but we don't really look very much at our, our middle-school student performance. And so, this is specifically the performance of our middle-school students on this year's STAR test at the master's level. And so, that's the highest level of performance, students are performing above grade level, they have mastered those skills. And you'll see that we showed significant increases in every area except for sixth-grade math. And so, I think that's a tremendous accomplishment, coming out of a pandemic and coming out of remote learning, students really showed significant gains, and the teachers are behind that to a great degree. And so, we're very proud of the accomplishments of our advanced academic students at the middle-school level. Instead of showing you the performance of students, which we'll get to probably later in the year, student test results don't come out until July, just wanted to share with you the participation increase at, in the IB program for our students. And so, in 2021, we had 44 students in the IB program, and this year, we have 53 or had 53 students. We had 130 exams taken, and this past year, we had 150 exams taken.
When do we find out they pass? Is that coming up?
In July, yes, usually the first week of July. And then, for the AP test, you'll notice, we had in 2021, 310 students testing, and that went down to 227 students. We had 480 exams taken, and that went down to 389 exams. And that, we attribute to funding source that shifted, and so, we have the Gear Up Grant, and the Gear Up Grant paid for students to be able to take those tests. And so, as the grant shifts grade levels, then those students are either having to pay for that out-of-pocket, because they're challenging the test, they're not enrolled in the class. And so, if you're not enrolled in the class, then, then parents pay for that test, and we cover the cost for any student that is enrolled in the class, and so...
Where's the Gear Up Grant now? Is it start, starting over with the freshman cohort, or?
It is 11th and 12th grade, if I remember correctly, yes. Any other questions about that slide? Okay, the other thing that I'd like to touch on, that's a little bit different than what we usually talk about, is the student experience. And so, if you will allow me to just share that with you, we want our advanced academics experience, we want our advanced academics experience to be rigorous, and we want it to be challenging for students, but we don't want students to sit through a 30-minute lecture and then open up a book and do a workbook, a worksheet, or write a paper. We want them to have a positive experience, we want them to have a quality experience. And so, at the middle-school level, you see on the left in Ms. Baker's math classroom, I believe, they're actually doing a team-building activity. And so, they stepped away from the learning a little bit to just do an activity that engages the minds, but also engages students with each other. And then, you see on the right, there's another activity in one of our English classrooms at Bonham Middle School, where students did a reading selection from our textbook, and then went out into the hallways, rather than, again, sitting and doing a worksheet, went into the hallways and collaborated with each other to look at each other's work and do kind of a gallery walk. Here is our high-school English class, where students, again, collaborating, collaboratively working on what we call a summary salad, and so, they worked on the summarizing skill, and then also, a little bit of opportunity for students to show their other skills by applying, I think they pulled, they used text evidence to illustrate where different locations were in the Lord of the Flies book. And so, again, opportunities for students to show their learning in a variety of ways. Here is Mr. Stratman's science class. First, we have Dr. Mike's physics class, where they did the famous egg-drop experiment. And of course, being in an advanced physics class, this allows students to apply their physics knowledge to this, rather than just taping things together and dropping an egg. So, that was a great opportunity for them to apply their knowledge. And here, Mr. Stratman's chemistry class, students were able to mix water and sugar solutions at various degrees, and so, by mixing them at different degrees, you get the rainbow that you see there. And so, again, opportunities for students to have hands-on learning, to collaborate with each other, and have fun. One of the pieces of advanced academics that we don't talk about a lot is fine arts. And so, Ms. Tolleson had a cooperative opportunity with her colleagues, Ms. Ramirez, and I believe Ms. Fuller, who's also an art teacher, and they took students to the Fine Arts Museum in Houston, and they got the opportunity to see some exhibits and artists that they had studied. And so, that was a great opportunity, again, for them to step outside of the classroom, to explore, and to spend time with their, with their classmates. Dr. Genowitz' student talked about being around her people, and so, it's great to be around your people, but it's greater when they have the opportunity to do that outside of the classroom and really connect with each other and share similar interests. The final picture that I have for you is related to the IB house program at the high school, and so, they have found a way to take care of students' social-emotional needs, and they've developed this program that puts those IB students into teams, and they compete throughout the year in various types of activities. And so, you'll see on the top right that those students were just at that moment being assigned their different teams. On the left at the top, you'll see kind of a point board that shows the points that were distributed to each of the teams. And then, at the bottom, you'll see kind of a field day that those students had, where they were able to, again, take care of their social-emotional needs, step out of the classroom, compete with each other on a physical level, rather than just the academic level. So, looking ahead to the years to come, we have just learned of opportunities for our CTE students to be served, those that are GT-identified. Some, some of our students that are GT-identified do not end up in advanced academics. They want to take the CTE pathway, they want to get a certification, and so, they're, they're just not interested in the AP, IB program, and so, we still want to make sure that they're able to be served as GT students, and so, Region 12 will be supporting us with that in the near future. We'd also like to bring back the summer reading program that we've had in the past, that's kind of dissolved a little bit over the past few years, but really making sure that our advanced students are reading over the summer accustomed to reading different types of text and engaging in different types of text as they get ready for the next school year. And finally, we will be having our first summer workshop for advanced academics teachers, and that will take place on July 19. My instructional coaches have worked really hard over the past several days to design this training, and so, they're going to have the opportunity to connect with each other, because we have a lot of new advanced academics teachers over the past three or four years. So, there are some people that just don't know who the high-school advanced teachers are, don't know who the middle-school advanced teachers are, so we want to give them an opportunity to connect with each other and get to know each other. We're going to have time for them to reflect and really think about what does advanced academics mean, and then, we're going to have an opportunity for them to grow with each other and start looking at those skills. It's been a while since we've looked at those skills that students need in the sixth grade to get ready for advanced academics in the 11th and 12th grade, and what, what, what assignments or what products students should be able to give to demonstrate that they've learned at each grade level. And so, we're very excited about that. We're also going to do some visioning activities and think about what should advanced academics look like for Temple ISD in the future, in terms of our six-through-12 classes. And so, very excited about that opportunity for our teachers coming up on July 19. That is the last slide, so we appreciate your time very much. Are there questions?
Members, if you have any questions? Well, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Very good review. Item C is finance facilities. One, discussion of the 2022-2023 projected revenue. Mrs. Vaden. Welcome.
Thank you. Like everyone else, I'm excited to be here tonight. Tonight, I will be bringing you your first look at the revenues, that portion of our proposed budget for next year. At your place, I believe you have a handout, and that's what I will be talking through tonight. The very first page of that, this is what I call a revenue recap, you have seen this before, certainly not your first time to see this, but do want to kind of walk you through the setup of, of how this is organized. The two left columns are the funds that are used to, to capture all the revenue amounts. The first funds are the board-required adopted funds, the first of those being the general fund, and you see that that is separated by local, state, and federal. This makes up the largest portion of the funds that we have available to spend, and so, those are, are very commonly separated out that way. The next two are the remaining required adopted funds, being food service and debt service. And then, below that are all the local funds, and then our state and federal grant funds, which are not required to be board-adopted, but always want to bring those to your attention and talk through those, so that you get an absolutely complete picture of all the revenue that's available to the district. The next column is the fund balance at the end of our last fiscal year. So, at the end of our 2021 fiscal year, you will see those funds that have a fund balance, those are listed in that column. The first one being the general fund, again, this is the largest portion of our budget, and fund balance at that time last year was 24.6 million. And while most of the time, if not almost all the time, when we talk about fund balance, that is the fund balance that we're talking about, you do see below that, those other funds that, that are allowed to and do carry a fund balance. And so, for food service, you see there of just over 2 million, debt services is over 4 million, and, and the remainder, as you go down that column. The next column of information is our 2021 end-of-year. Again, this was last fiscal year, and, and really only want to point out two things about the information there. The first being, for the general fund, just like to always point out the, the portion of, of those revenues in the general fund that are local versus state, and you see in this instance, the local revenue makes up just over 48%, and the state makes up about 50%. So, not quite half and half, but very close. And then, the other thing that I, I want to point out about this information, and, and you will see this kind of a common theme as I, I go through my presentation tonight, the food service fund, and then, almost closer to the bottom, the summer feeding program fund, you, you will see for food service, there's about a $1.3 million revenue for, again, for last fiscal year. And then, going down towards the bottom, the summer feeding, there's about a $3.5 million revenue. And that has to do with, depending on the option we choose, whether it's like seamless summer option or, or school lunch program, determines the accounting structure and which fund that, that goes in. And so, that, over, over the year that we're in and proposed into next year, those kind of switch, and, and so, it really does skew the ability to compare those. So, I did want to point out for last year, most of, of those revenues were in the summer feeding fund. With that, I will kind of take the next two columns together. The 21-22 column is our current budget. Again, that's, that's our budget that we have in place right now, not intended to be a, a projection of any kind, current budget. And then, the 2023 column, that is our, our planning amounts, or our, or what will become our proposed amounts going into next year. And so, looking at, let's look at the 22-23 year, you will see at the top, an ADA, at this point, planning of 7,557. That is, is derived from our current actual ADA through the fifth, six weeks, and then an estimate for the final six weeks. And then, we did add 75 to that for expected growth. So, that's our ADA planning for next year. As, as compared to, you'll see, the year that we're in, the ADA planning was 7601, and so, that, that is somewhat of a decrease. And, and I do want to talk about that as we get further in, into the presentation, I've got another presentation about the ADA for this current year. The tax rate at this point, we are looking at for next year, have what we plan, or what we expect our compressed rate to be for the MNO rate, and you see there, it's just over 91 cents. And at this point, the INS rate, I have not adjusted at all, I have left that completely flat. And as we work through the bond sale and, and required tax rate adoption, that may change somewhat, but we expect that to, to remain very, very steady. So, then, looking at the actual planning amounts, you will see the change from anticipated for next year of 52 million compared to our current budget of 45 million in local revenues. And so, you, you can see that's just over a $6.4 million increase, which is pretty substantial, and that's the result of our property value increase, so, for the most part. Obviously, there's a few other changes in there as well, but our preliminary values that we received from the Tax Appraisal District, including our recently-approved $40,000 homestead exemption, are just over a 15% increase in value. So, even, even though we are expecting to have to compress our MNO tax rate, you, you will still see a significant increase there in local revenues. Of that 52 million, there's about 50, about 51 and a half million of that is actually tax revenues, so obviously, a substantial amount. Moving on then to state revenues, you will see a decrease there to 4, about 40.9 million, which represents a decrease of not quite 5 million in state revenues. And so, this, we've talked about before, your, your student count... your student counts and your attendance, for the most part, determine your revenues. And so as state revenues go up, your local revenues will go down or vice versa. And so this kind of gets back to what I pointed out about last year and that percentage that state and local. You will see now that those percentages are beginning to shift, and more of our revenues are coming from the local level than from the state, which had been in the past, and I think with House Bill 3, they tried to remedy some of that. And so I think as values are continuing to rise, we will see that kind of head back in the direction it was in the past.
And Callan, I think it's safe to say that, you know, one of the things that you hear when values go up locally over and over is that there's a misconception out there that because values go up, that means more local revenue, which that is true. But to the general public, they think that that means more money in schools. And that's not always the case because, as Callan pointed out, and you can see here with the numbers, that just means the state gives you less because we're all equalized to some extent at the basic allotment. So that piece equalizes there, and I think that's a very, very important message because although it's trying times with values going up, that does not mean the school district stands to gain. You know, we may gain a little bit, but we're not gaining all that realized value. There's, I mean, it's just not happening.
Absolutely. Great point. So in total, looking at the general fund itself, we are anticipating just over $95 million in revenue, which will be about a $1.2 million increase. Again, most of this is going to be related to our property tax increase in values. And while Dr. Otten made an absolutely spot-on remark, there is some of that that's still a benefit from our TRE election we had years ago. And so that piece of our tax rate does provide some additional revenue when our values go up. Looking at the next two board-required adopted funds, you will see the food service fund, we are looking at just over $6.2 million in revenue, which is almost an $800,000 increase over the current year. And this is one, want to point out again, it's very difficult to compare between food service and summer feeding over these past three years. This increase is the result of what, basically the summer feeding program or historically the program that's offered in the summer. Again, because of the options we have chosen as to how that's provided, those funds will be accounted for within Fund 240. So that increase is really the result of accounting for the summer program in that fund rather than the one below. The next fund is the debt service fund. You see there, $17.3 million anticipated for next year, which is just over $2 million increase over the current year, and that is the result of our property values. Then beyond that, the next group of funds is our local funds, very minor in comparison to all the other funds on this page. And they are capped by the amount that they generate. So this is not, this is really a planning amount. This is not something that we have to budget and they spend upfront. These are really funds that, one way or another, they generate and then they are spent. But so in this area, we are looking at about a $72,000 overall increase. The next section is our state grants. And you see there, looking at that in total, for state grants, we are looking at about a $1.5 million planning amount for next year. Again, very, very similar to what we are looking at this year. Almost no increase expected from our state grants at all. And then the bottom section is our federal grants. And do want to point out, I guess, a couple of things. The first one being the very first line in there, Title I, we are looking at just over $4 million entitlement or a planning amount. This was really good news because this is an increase, a true increase in an expected amount, just over a half million dollars. And so this allowed us to continue those programs and at the level that we had planned to before without having to shift the areas where we were paying for those. And then right below that, our IDEA B formula is our next largest grant. And at this point, it does have a planning amount of 1.8 million. You will notice my note over to the right that says unspent funds roll forward. We are expecting to have almost that exact amount. We're anticipating about 358,000 will roll forward. So we'll cover that anticipated decrease in funds. And then the only, the last thing I do want to, well, a couple of things. You'll see there the summer feeding program amount. You'll notice that that is zero. Again, that's what we talked about, that will be accounted for in Fund 240. And then the principal residency grant, that was brand-new this year and funded our principal intern program, which I heard was very, very successful and was allowed because of this grant, but that funding goes away. And then the last thing I really want to talk about on this page, there's two SIR amounts, kind of towards the bottom. There's a 7 million and an 8.5 million dollar. These are our stimulus funds. These are the amounts at this point that we are expecting to have as revenue. And you count the revenue at the point you make the expenses because that comes as a reimbursement. And so for the grants, the revenue will exactly match the expenses, that's how they work. And so these are the planning amounts for those two stimulus programs. For the SIR 2 program, we were awarded just over $11 million. And so with, as you can look across all three years, next year, we will be basically expending the final amount of that SIR 2 funding. But then below that, SIR 3, the 8.5 million dollars, that was about a $25 million entitlement. And you can see if you add across there, there are still funds remaining. And so we've got about 6.5 million, 7 million that we will still carry forward into the following year. And so with that, that's kind of a summary overall of the revenue, looking at an entire increase of just over $5 million. Again, of that, there's about a million and a half that's increased from our SIR funding, our stimulus funding. There's about $2 million that's in our debt service fund. There's about $500,000 in our school nutrition fund, primarily related to increased participation and increased reimbursement rates. And then the general fund is about a $1.5 million. I'm sorry, about a $1.2 million increase, primarily driven by our property tax values. That's kind of it in total. Are there questions about that page? Okay. Then next, I have a couple of items, very specific items that I want to walk through. The next, we talked about, I think, following the board retreat in March related to finances, and then specifically coming out of, I think, the following policy committee meeting, we talked about attendance waivers and hold harmless and ADA. And so I've got some specific examples that I want to walk through in those areas. This next page comes straight out of the state funding template. And now this is for the current year that we're in, this is our 21-22 school year. So what we talked about before was planning for next year. This is the 21-22 year that we are in, this piece. And so TEA, I guess granted, awarded what they call a hold harmless, and it had to do with attendance rates for the first four six weeks grading periods. And the hold harmless piece was that they would use the first four six weeks from the 1920 school year, pre-COVID. Whatever that attendance rate was, they would allow us, if that was higher than our current attendance rate, that they would allow us to use that instead. And so this walks through that calculation. And so the top part of that, under the very first blue bar there, is our average percentage attendance rate from 1920, and that was given to us by TEA. And you see there that our attendance rate at that time was 94.37%. Below that is the calculation for this current year. And you go through that, and you see each of the four six weeks. And the average percentage this year for the first four six weeks is 91.61%. So by default, because it's lower, we do qualify for the hold harmless piece. Then, of course, that comparison is the next section where it says determine eligibility. Then below that, you will see our actual ADA for each of the four six weeks grading periods this year. And it goes across and it averages those. And so the average, the actual average this year was 7501. And then it basically says, okay, if you were to apply that 94% attendance rather than the 91% attendance, what would that ADA look like? And so that's the first yellow box that's below that. And you see it would increase it from 7501 to 7726. That's pretty substantial. And then to the right of that, again, the hold harmless was only the first four six weeks. And so you will see then the fifth six weeks and the sixth six weeks, the actual ADA for this school year, which gets us to an annual ADA of 7632. And then you see below that the comparison, I've copied that out of our template. Had, the first column there is, had we used the actual ADA, what those dollar amounts would look like? With the hold harmless percentage, what that dollar amount looks like? And then the difference, the 1 million, almost 1,600,000. And so that's how the hold harmless worked. Now, what I want to point out, and I think this is incredibly important, if you remember the first page I talked about, at the very top of that for 21-22, the ADA that we use for budgeting is 7601. So that this gets us to 7632, it really does what it said it was going to do, it holds us harmless. So it's not like we got a million dollars we weren't expecting. We budgeted that. And so really, it just kind of gets us to where we were expecting to be all along. We didn't lose a million, exactly.
And this is the second year that TEA has provided a hold harmless around the pandemic. And I have heard no indication of it even being a discussion for next year. And I think that's very important because attendance rates across the state have not gone back to pre-COVID times. They just haven't. They've gotten better, but they are not, they have not returned. And that's very important going into the next budget planning year. There's a lot of opinions around that. I'm not so sure we have enough time to hear mine, but, I mean, in short, I think the pandemic has had a lot of effects on society in general. I think it's had effects on the workplace. You know, working from home, not showing, not having to show up. I think it's had effects on students and public education. You know, when you go straight remote to having options. My gut feeling is the idea of compulsory attendance has really fallen to the wayside, and we're just going to need, we being collective public educator, we're just going to need time to get it back. And I think that, I think it's been a paradigm shift that's come along with the pandemic. And I just don't think we're, we've gone back to pre-pandemic, so that's just my thoughts on it.
All right, then the next two pages have to do with the waiver process. Again, this kind of came out of the policy meeting. I think that was the meeting that we actually approved submitting a waiver on behalf of the district. And so the question came up, exactly what does that look like or how does that work? And so this is my attempt to kind of provide that information. The narrative page that starts out at the top, it talks about average daily attendance. This is, the first section is copied completely from the handout that day that we did the board retreat on finances and how we calculate our ADA and our basic allotment, that we pull out the sped FTEs and the CTE FTEs, and then that's applied by a basic allotment amount. That's completely, again, copied from that handout that day. But then the bottom section is new, and this is the two types of waivers that TEA allows districts to apply for. The first being a missed school day waiver. And so the first two days that are missed, it says for inclement weather, health, safety-related, or other issues. Those first two days must be made up, and that can either be days or included in extra minutes within the calendar. But then if you have more than two days, you are allowed to submit a waiver for missed school days. And then there's also a waiver for low attendance days. And so these are days where you actually have school, but the attendance rate is less than 10 percentage points below the average from the prior year. So our prior year attendance rate average is basically 93%. And so if we had a day that our attendance rate was 83% or less, we would qualify for a waiver. And so the process to apply for that is basically the same. The thing I do want to point out, the very, the last two sentences at the bottom, if TEA approves the waiver for the missed school day, the district treats that as a non-school day. That should say it is removed and not reported as a school day. It says it is not removed, but it should say it is removed and not reported as a school day through the PIMS reporting system. And then the very last page in your handout kind of walks you through what that looks like. And so we have, I have taken a sample month of January, and the very first set of data is, under normal circumstances, you know, regular school day every day for the full month of January. And so for this example, I have assumed an enrollment of 8,000 every day over the course of the month, but changed the attendance percentages for each of those days. And you see then that calculates to ADA. If you sum that at the bottom, you get total monthly attendance. Again, this first one, first example, 146,000. You divide that by the number of instructional days that month, and so your ADA is 7346. The middle set of data is what would happen if you had one low attendance day. And so you see that there in blue. Instead of assuming a 94% attendance, we used a 60% attendance. And if you go down to the bottom, again, assuming you don't file a waiver, then that day gets included, and you see, based on 20 instructional days, your ADA drops to 7210, so you've lost 136. And so then the impact, the third and final set of data is what happens with a low attendance waiver. Basically, you see, I've crossed that out. It's as if that day does not exist. And so you come to the bottom, you total your attendance, you divide that then by 19 days, and your ADA is 7336. So basically, it won't always work out that way, but basically what it would have been under normal circumstances. And so that's kind of how the information gets to TEA once you've applied for and been granted the waiver. Are there questions? For this example, I did, yes.
I appreciate Callan walking through the, there's a lot of work behind the detail on the projected revenues. The other two items were items that were left over from the budget workshop. You know, you approve the waivers that go to TEA. And so it's important to, not the hold harmless, it's important to understand that. It's important to understand that for sure because, I mean, we could have, we could have lost a million out of that deal. And I don't even know how many, how much money we could have lost the year before. I have no idea. But, and then understanding kind of how it works with the waiver process and, and what it really means when you approve that in terms of how it affects us on the revenue side. I think those are very important pieces. With the state comptroller deal that we had talked about, the budget workshop, you know, that could have been a $2 million deficit. And then you add this hold harmless thing. This could have been a whole, completely different budget going into this with a $3 million, or 3 million less, I should say, going into the budget planning. And so we, I don't know if it's a little bit of luck or a lot of good things. I don't know, but it, it did come together.
I'll take it whatever it is.
Yeah, I will too, I promise you. But it all came together and I think you'll be very pleased with a budget that Callan will take forward in a couple of weeks to be adopted. Appreciate all your hard work on this, Callan, I really do.
Thank you. You, you make this look easy, which I know it's not.
Thanks, I think.
And we will see you Wednesday for the expense and compensation part of the budget meeting Wednesday evening, so.
And Donna.
Yeah, very good. All right. Any further questions, members? Thank you very much. Item two, consideration and possible action with respect to an order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds established in sale parameters, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase contract and escrow agreement, providing, approving an official statement and enacting other provisions related to the subject. And that's Mrs. Vaden.
Tonight, we have Jennifer Ritter.
And Jennifer.
Our financial advisor and Bart Fowler, our bond counsel here to walk us through the order.
Welcome back.
Thank you and congratulations. This is obviously the culmination of the bond election that you had in May, moving forward with, with next steps now that that's been completed. And then you get to, you get to get the funds and then you get to get the fun part of actually constructing the projects that you told the public about. So this is a delegation order. This is what we've done in the last couple of sales for you all. The delegation assembly is a recognition by the legislature that, you know, interest rates in the market move daily. To have to be restricted to pricing and selling on the day that the board meets would potentially not be the best day in the bond market. So they allow you the ability to actually delegate authority to price on, on the board's behalf to, in this case, the superintendent and the chief financial officer to price on your behalf, which is a very useful tool in this market. You probably saw the news about the stock market today officially kind of going into bear market territory. The bond market has been all over the place, kind of fueled by the inflation concerns. Certainly, interest rates have risen, but we contemplated that when we called the bond election and the, and the higher interest rates were, were plugged into that. So having that flexibility to be able to time is very important and having, you know, the superintendent and CFO be able to price on your behalf is going to be beneficial in being able to time the market. I don't have a presentation because we haven't priced yet. So this is really just kind of to walk through the process and to allow you to ask any questions. But next steps, certainly we've applied for the permanent school fund guarantee. That takes your AA minus bond rating from Standard and Poor's and, and puts the AAA guarantee of the state of Texas on top of that. That's really the most time-consuming part of this process here because the state only awards that once a month on the 20th business day of the month. We're trying to price in June to be ahead of a lot of the other school bonds that passed in May. They're probably going toward the end of July, early August because most districts have to wait on certified values to come in this summer. You aren't in that position, so we're trying to get ahead of some of those. But the permanent school fund guarantee takes 20 business days. June has a new holiday, obviously, with Juneteenth. So we're kind of looking at 23rd of June before we can actually sell and price these. So we've already applied for that permanent school fund guarantee. We're in the process of seeking a bond rating from Standard and Poor's. Administration had a call last week with Standard and Poor's to go over that. So we've, we're ready to go. We're kind of basically waiting on the permanent school fund guarantee and that rating to come back and, and aiming to price on June, there are about June 22nd, so not next week, but the following week. The Fed meets this week, so we'll see what comes out of that meeting in terms of interest rates. Certainly, interest rates have been kind of going up and down a little bit. Hopefully, we, we hope to time it for a down day or down to, down to in, in the market. So we do have that flexibility, as we mentioned with the delegation. If it's not a good day in the market, we can pull it and come back a couple of days later. But we're obviously cognizant of the fact that you've got schools to build and, and things to go out and do with the money. So we can't wait, you know, forever. And certainly, waiting in this market probably is not going to help with interest rates anyway. So again, our goal here is to be ahead of a lot of the other volume of school bonds that will be coming out this summer, which I think this schedule that you've had before you allows you to do and kind of, kind of beat the rush here. So ideally, if we can price around June 22nd, we'll be in a position there, excuse me, June 29th, I should say, we'll be in a position there to actually close toward the end of July. And that'll be when funds come back to Temple ISD. So during that time, you can obviously start planning in terms of the procedures to get started on the construction projects and then start spending money after the 28th of July, assuming all goes according to schedule. The parameters that you have in the order itself, and Bart can address if you have questions on that specifically, but they are very broad. They're broad to give us the ability to obviously be able to, to do what's best for the district in a trying market. However, obviously, our, our concern and obviously staff's concern as well is that we deliver on what we told the voters and make sure that those parameters in terms of interest rate, in terms of tax rate increase are either at or better than what we told the voters. So that'll always be first and foremost in our mind is that we want to deliver at or better than what the voters were told, to be able to deliver those schedules on time and on budget. So happy to answer any questions. Again, we don't have pricing information for you because we haven't priced yet. We're trying to hurry as quickly as possible and get that done. And they can kind of follow up thereafter, the fact when the sale is done, with information on how the pricing went.
Members, any questions? Jennifer or Bart? This is.
Does Bart present?
Is Bart, I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't want to skip you.
No, no problem. I'm here, so I might as well take a little bit extra time. For the record, my name is Bart Fowler with McCall Park. Kristen Horton, it's a pleasure to serve the district as bond counsel. Everything Jennifer said is obviously correct. The one thing I'll add is this delegation, and this is probably not relevant for your purposes, but the delegation is good for 12 months from tonight if you decide to adopt it. Obviously, you're looking to price for the next couple of weeks. That's really not much of an issue. If this goes on much longer, market doesn't cooperate in that end of June, early July timeframe, chances are we'll be back up here to talk to you about it sometime after that. As opposed to just going and acting on this in three or four months. We'll probably come back and visit with you. But there's certainly no indication that's ever going to be a concern, but just FYI, it's a 12-month period you have to get effective delegation, but you're expecting to do it the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Members, any further questions? This does require approval. Motion by Ms. Suarez.
Second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming up. Thanks a lot.
And let me ask a real quick question. I probably should have asked it before it came to vote. This also included the reimbursement resolution piece because I'd like the board members to understand that piece. I know, as Jennifer said, the, the bond funds won't come until after the end of July as far as spending that, but we're looking at moving on projects before the bond monies come in place. And this order included an opportunity to do that. Bart, if you want to explain that.
It does. And off the top of my head, I can't remember the exact section number of the order, order, but I do remember visiting with Callan about that. And we went through it and I explained where that, that was located. It is included there. Just for a little bit of background, if anyone's unsure, you, from the time you adopt an order like this, you can go back 60 days from tonight and pick up any costs you may have already incurred. Going forward, up until the time we issue this debt, you can also reimburse yourself from your general fund out of the bonded proceeds once they're received. That's a federal tax law requirement. You have to give evidence of that intent. And that's what you're doing as part of the order tonight. That's included, yes.
And I know the community really wanted to see projects get off the ground. There are projects that are not architect-related, whether it's roofs, playgrounds, so forth, could be lighting. And so those are things that we would go ahead and move on now. And then through this order, we're able to charge that back to the bond when the bond money comes in. And I do want to thank both of you, Jennifer and Bart. They don't get enough credit. We don't see you enough. That's probably part of it. But they are on the phone all the time. They walk with us step by step. They were with us before the November election and the May. And we are just really grateful for their expertise. They have helped us in a lot of ways moving forward with the May bond. So thank you both.
Appreciate it. All right. Item three, consideration for approval of an audit firm to provide audit services. Mrs. Vaden again.
The, the district issued requests for proposals for financial audit services on May the 2nd and simultaneously posted those requests for proposals on our website. We had four firms that submitted proposals back to us. And our internal committee of district administrators reviewed each of those proposals. And the criteria listed for evaluation are expertise and experience of the firm, expertise and experience of the staff that would be assigned to the district, the adequacy of the proposed staffing for the various segments of the engagement, including supervision and budgeted hours, the thoroughness of the planned audit approach, past experience with single audits, which has to do with our federal grants, past experience with school districts or similar audit clients, the ability to perform any additional services if necessary, and then finally, the cost. Independently, each committee member ranked the proposals according to all of the criteria except cost. That was done first. And then only after that point, that part was done, then the cost was factored into the scoring. And then finally, the committee met and combined all the rankings to determine which proposal ranked the highest. And so after thorough analysis, the committee is recommending the selection of Lot Vernon and Company to perform our 2122 fiscal year audit with, with four possible annual extensions. But those extensions would, would come back and be recommended to you each year. And so on behalf of the committee, that's what we are asking for approval of Lot Vernon to perform our 2122 audit.
You know, they went through the process, but they've done this for several years for us too, haven't they? The local firm based here in Temple. Yeah. Okay. Members, any questions? This needs a request. Dr. Sanhe.
I don't have a question. I would like to make the motion.
Motion.
To hire Lot Vernon and Company PC to perform the annual independent audit for us.
All right. Motion made by Dr. Sanhe.
I second the motion.
And seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item D is student services. No items there. E is board committee reports. Facility committee update. Meeting was held Thursday, May 26, 2022 at 4:00 PM. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Bond tentative project timeline. Mr. Wolf presented a tentative timeline for all bond projects. One of, once architect forms are signed, the timeline will be finalized. The administration will keep the committee updated on the future, at future meetings. New elementary school design was discussed. The administration provided an update on the design of the process for the new elementary school. The team has, has held several sessions with members of CNI and fine arts departments to refine the plans and identify instructional requirements for each space. Zeta Phi Beta property discussion. Mr. Boyd provided an update on the process for acquiring property from the Zeta Phi Beta sorority. Legal counsel has encountered some challenges in completion of the transaction because the sorority has no longer has an active governing body, board, rather. There's no way to legally obtain the clear title for the property. The administration can however, obtain the deed onto the property, which would allow the district to control and maintain the property. The committee members acknowledge that the challenge, that would be a challenge, but support moving forward with it. Meeting, that was the last item. Meeting was adjourned at 5:02 PM. Our next meeting will be held June 30th at CAO at 4:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Item two is policy committee update. Meeting was held Thursday, May 25th, 2022 at 4:00 PM. Mrs. Davis.
The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. The safe return to school plan was presented. The changes to the plan since the last review were highlighted. No one spoke at the plan's public hearing. Friends of Temple nominations and alumni spotlight submissions were reviewed and discussed. Several individuals will be presented at the future board meetings. Recent facility name submissions under policy CW Local were reviewed and discussed. The committee updated the list and this list was included in the consent agenda at tonight's board meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 4:50 PM. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 29th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. And that's the meeting that all members will be attending to. Okay. There been no further business. We're adjourned tonight. Thank y'all very much.